All right, good evening. At this time, I will open the public hearing. And I'll begin by reading this legal notice here. The Common Council of the City of Ole Miss in New York has scheduled a public hearing for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024 at 6:00 P.M. In the council chambers of the Ole Miss Municipal Building, the purpose of this hearing is to receive public input on proposed local law 03-2024 to authorize the issuance of warrants or filing of default judgments for two non appearances in the Ole Miss City Court for local charges. For more information or for a copy of the proposed legislation, please contact the Common Council Office, 716-376-5635, or visit us on the web, www.cityoleand.com. At this time, I'll invite all members of the public to approach the podium, state your name and address. You'll have five minutes to remark on this public hearing. Anyone? Anyone? Third time, anyone at all? No comments? At this time, I'll call the public hearing closed. All right, next up, I'll call the Order Committee of the Whole for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Let the record show that all aldermen are present. First on our agenda, by alderman, uh, topic by Alderman Robinson, uh, the Common Council Rules of Procedure. Alderman Robinson.
Thank you, John. Referring to Chapter 2, Administration, Article 2, Common Council, Division 2, Rules of Procedure, Section 2-48 Presiding Officer. Uh, there's been a policy put in place via the Charter, and that policy pretty much for procedure is pretty much outdated. Uh, the council has not been following this particular procedure. Uh, when you refer, there's four sections, and, uh, the one that states, uh, "In the event of a temporary absence of the Common Council President, the Common Council shall designate by majority vote a member to act as presiding officer. In the event of the failure of the Common Council to designate a presiding officer by majority vote, uh, the parliamentarian shall act as chairman pro term to appoint the presiding officer." Uh, there's two issues here. Uh, one, if the, there's a temporary absence of the Common Council President, uh, you have to call the order in order to be able to do that, and there's no one here to call the order, which brings you back to the parliamentarian. Uh, according to the Charter, uh, Robert's Rule of Order, uh, I'm gonna skip some of this, but it comes right out and it states straight, uh, "The city attorney shall be the parliamentarian of the city." So with that, if the city attorney isn't available, then again, you run into an issue where there's no way to come to order to even do a vote to come to a common council president temporarily. So therefore, I'm suggesting that we amend, uh, this particular section, uh, 2-48 Presiding Officer, uh, to eliminate, or I'm sorry, to amend the first section and pretty much bring part of the third section up into the first section. Uh, so the third section states, "In the absence of the Common Council President," uh, it states, "From other than a regular or special meeting, for example, a work session or a hearing, the president may designate a member of the Common Council to act as presiding officer for such meeting." Uh, so basically, when we have this type of meeting here, uh, the regular meeting, the presi- the next meeting, sorry, when we have the next meeting, in order to hold that meeting, we would have to, uh, go through this procedure. But again, you can't. So in this case, I'm suggesting that we change the language to where we eliminate the wording from, uh, "from other than a regular or special meeting" and put that into Section 1 and eliminate the parliamentarian, uh, portion of the first section. So I figured that would be a good discussion to have. It could be a quick discussion. It's pretty much self-explanatory, but, uh, I thought this needed to be done. That way, it could be taken care of. Uh, I do know, we all know that the, we do have the Charter Commission working on the Charter, but this is something that can be taken care of by the council, so.
Okay, um, so I'll, I'll piggyback off that. Thanks, Alderman Robinson, for, uh, for bringing this up. Um, there, so first of all, there are a number of items that we really, not only us, but possibly the Charter Commission, uh, should take a look at, uh, as for what is being current practice, what's been practiced for, I guess, as long as I've been here and my predecessors. Um, to my knowledge, we've never followed that procedure. Uh, with that being said, we've also talked about that the old school methodology was driven by the strict Robert Rules of Order, uh, in which, you know, the procedure where the, uh, the official would designate X amount of time to each individual. I mean, and it, uh, something I've talked to Tiffany about in the past is possibly just doing what's called like a simplified version of Robert's Rules of Order. Um, since most of us are part-time in, you know, city officials, uh, I don't think they teach Robert Rules of Orders, uh, in, in school anymore. I think there's an abbreviated version of it that would just, you know, keep order for the purpose of our meetings, but probably be more in line with what we do anyways. Um, so, so that being said, um, it's just a, it would be, I think, a city code or a, a local law to, to tweak the current wording, um, and just follow with what we do, uh, in the absence of the council president, so. Thanks for bringing that up. I'm open to any comments, suggestions, thoughts.
Uh, I believe, so if I'm following Vernon right, I mean, I do agree, we should do something so that we can follow whatever the rule is. Um, but I think you would have to word something such so that if John is not able to appoint someone, uh, it can still go through the parliamentarian, whoever that's, if it has to be the termy or if it's someone else.
And that's a fair point. Um, I think there probably is, again, further language, uh, on the, so just hypothetically, right, like, uh, if an emergency happened and I wasn't able to, or I shouldn't say I, but the council president wasn't able to appoint or preliminary nominate, appoint someone to, uh, to run the meeting, then, then who's gonna do that? Alderman McCall.
Could we not say, um, if you did not appoint, that the council could vote to, um, elect somebody for the time being? I mean, that kind of keeps it.
But then who calls the meeting to order? Give the city parliamentarian to call the meeting to order by Robert's Rules.
It's not, it's not the Robert's Rules, by Charter. Or you could just follow the Charter. I mean, now you're coming up with different scenarios of not following it. Could just follow the way that's written. City parliamentarian didn't leave the meetings, called the meeting to order in the event, it's been brought up three times by me, questioned. Because then you could also say, how do you know that, how do we know that you appointed Simon today? If you don't send out a, an email. Simple way is just follow the way the Charter is written. Takes five minutes to handle it.
Okay, other thoughts?
I sort of agree with JR. It's like, if you know the council president knows he's gonna be absent because he's notified, you count how it's worth to the attorney is. Say that I'm gonna be absent today. You have to be there, no questions asked. He's gotta come here for five minutes. Just open the meeting and we can proceed. It'd be the easiest way to do it without changing things.
Okay. I think it's, I, you know, I think we're just talking about streamlining. Um, and, and, you know, I think that these are all valid thoughts. These are good. What I would suggest is if there's, you know, further interest, uh, to bring forward a, a PL, and, you know, uh, we can further discuss it. But it's, doesn't, uh, we're, it doesn't take a referendum or anything like that to, to change this language. Um, in the future, uh, with the Charter Commission, I know two of the members here are on that, you may want to consider having a vice, um, as just, again, to mitigate any sort of confusion or whatever, just to have a vice president, um, for future, future thought. Alderman Robinson.
I wanna steal your word on streamlining. Um, a lot of this was written many years ago. Uh, the last time this was amended, it was in 2014, and prior to that was 1994. Um, when you look at the, I'm not opposed to leaving alone as long as we can have a parliamentarian here. That's been the problem. Um, if you look at, uh, even down the road in the future, uh, and even when I go back to when I first came on the council, uh, this is not the process that was followed. So, uh, I do recall reading in the Charter that the Robert's Rules were loosely followed. I can't remember the term that was used, but it was loosely followed. Uh, so therefore, I mean, I'm not opposed of eliminating steps to just be straightforward. Uh, so I will bring this up to, uh, the Charter Commission because this isn't the first part of that section there very easily, and then I can get some feedback from that group, and then I can come back with a PL and present it to the council. And if it passes, it passes. If not, then we need to ensure that there is a parliamentarian here, and if not, then essentially, we just cannot have a meeting. It's as simple as that. Uh, and then that eliminates that whole process, so.
I mean, there's a, so, for, for what it's worth, there's a lot of different hypotheticals, and we can always bounce around hypotheticals, right? If the council president isn't present, um, if, what happens then? If the parliamentarian isn't present, then you can't hold a meeting. And the Charter states we have to hold a meeting twice a month, on the second and fourth Tuesday of the month. So, you know, there's a lot of different things to consider. I would ask you to please consider that, um, as you, you know, you work through the legislation and, uh, and circle back with us.
Or you can have a special meeting the next day or the day after, as long as this.
Correct.
Twice.
Twice a month. Okay. Anything further? Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn for a good second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor. I oppose motion carried. You are adjourned from the committee of the whole. At this time, I'll call the regular meeting of the Common Council for Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. Will the clerk please call the attendance roll?
Alderman Benyon or?
Alderman Panis, here. Alderwoman Forney.
Here.
Alderwoman McCall.
Here.
Alderman Robinson.
Here.
Alderman Anastasia.
Here.
And President Crawford.
Here. Please rise to the invocation and question.
Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business, guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought, and speech. impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God,
Free, correct, and approval of the minutes of previous regular meeting.
Regular meeting of the Ole Miss Common Council was held on Tuesday, September 10th, 2024 at 6:20 P.M. Present were Alderman Crawford, Benyon, Panis, McCall, and Anastasia. Alderwoman Forney and Alderman Robinson were absent.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of previous regular meeting. Give it to a second. Second by Alderman Forney, all in favor. I oppose motion carried. Community reports and unfinished council business?
None.
Communication from the mayor?
Thank you. We have a proclamation, uh, Special Proclamation of Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Frank, would you read the proclamation, please?
Special proclamation for Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas ovarian cancer awareness month draws attention to one of the leading causes of cancer-related deaths in American women. Whereas ovarian cancer often has no symptoms, and when symptoms appear, they tend to be associated with other conditions. Whereas screening is difficult. In fact, at this point in time, no reliable screening or early detection, detection tests exist for ovarian cancer. Whereas survival rates increase significantly with early detection. Therefore, in recognition that increased awareness is a very important tool in fighting against ovarian cancer, I, William J. Haleo, Mayor of the City of Ole Miss, on behalf of the Common Council, do hereby proclaim September as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Ole Miss. Furthermore, I recommend that Ole Miss residents be aware of the symptoms associated with ovarian cancer. In testimony thereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Ole Miss 24th day of September, 2024. Signed, William J. Haleo, Mayor.
We have with us tonight Ann and Jay Sharokas. Ann has been instrumental in bringing this awareness to the city. Uh, you probably noticed that there are, uh, ribbons placed around, uh, on the trees in the city and to remind people of this, uh, of this month, so. Ann, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good day. Read this proclamation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I have one more. Sit back down here.
Okay.
Okay. I want to bring to the attention of the Common Council that the very own Vernon Robinson Jr. will be honored as the distinguished alumni of the Jamestown Community College. And there will be a gala held at Chautauqua Harbor Hotel, November 6th, 2024. So Vernon, I congratulate you, and, uh, this is a great honor, so. Congratulate, congratulations.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor?
That's it, thank you.
All right. Mr. Lumen Pat, Mr. Lennies Communications.
Easy for you to say. None.
City official reports.
None.
Proposed legislation or referrals.
PL number 85-24 by Mayor Haleo, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, for resolution by council president. PL number 95-24 by Alderwoman Forney, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, September 24th, 2024, for resolution by council president.
Okay, at this time, uh, I'd like to give an opportunity to any of the aldermen to make a statement of this. Okay, seeing none, uh, will the clerk please read the public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the Common Council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, voice their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, Common Council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
All right, at this time, I would invite any members of the public to approach the podium, state your name and address for the record. You'll have five minutes. Anyone? Anyone at all? Extra credit. Anyone? Okay, seeing none, at this time, I'll call the public comment close. Finance and bills.
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the City of Ole Miss as per lists submitted to each alderman and recommends payment thereof. Whereas the auditor has presented to the Common Council bills and claims against the City of Ole Miss totaling $2,638,211.98 for the budget and recommends payment thereof. Now therefore be resolved, that the same be, and are hereby audited and allowed. And the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the payment thereof at the amount set opposite each respective claim.
All right, so all of the aldermen have received a copy of the finance and bills. Are there any comments or questions? All right, so $2,638,000 to pay our bills. Do you guys have any to help us out with these bills? Nothing? All right, uh, any comments, questions? Seeing none, uh, I need two sponsors.
Our sponsor.
Motion is made by Alderman Anastasia, second by Alderwoman Forney. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon. Alderman Panis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney.
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
And President Crawford.
Yes.
Resolution, or the bill passes unanimous.
All right, on the resolutions.
Local law number 3-2024, PL numbers 94-24, a local law to authorize the issuance of warrants for arrests or filing of default judgments for two non appearances in Ole Miss City Court for local charges.
All right, this was previously discussed. Um, are there any comments or questions? I'll make a motion. Could I go second? Second by Alderwoman Forney, all in call. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon.
Yes.
Alderman Panis.
Yes.
Alderwoman Forney.
Yes.
Alderwoman McCall.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
And President Crawford.
Yes.
Resolution passes unanimous. Resolution number 90-24, PL number 85-24, resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the lever fund contingency to line item 8340.447.
All right, so we've talked about this one too in committee. Um, are there any comments or questions? Mr. Mayor, please.
Okay, I wasn't, uh, well, I wasn't here last, uh, last week at the committee meeting, but I understand you had a little bit of a discussion on this. And then I, I received an email from Alderman Anastasia that, uh, said he was sure the mayor could find the funds for this. So I have an idea. Uh, we have ARCA funds that are still, okay? Not leftover, but are been, uh, they're in a fund for HVAC in the municipal building. We are not gonna be ready to put HVAC in this building for at least, I would say, another year. And, uh, and it's gonna be, the funding, it's gonna be a lot more than $100,000. I want to suggest to you that you move that money so we can complete this project with the, the tanks, the cleaning, the, uh, uh.
Mixers.
The mixer, thank you. The mixers, so we can do this properly so that we don't have to redo it again in a few years. Uh, I believe we have, uh, I think there's, uh, either $100,000 or $90,000 left. This project, I talked to Brad today, to do everything's gonna be about $70,000. So the way the ARCA funds are working, we have to have it committed by December 3rd of '24. We have to have it spent, uh, but what I'm being told now is that we have to have it spent by December of 2025. So this gives us an opportunity to do the tanks, to do, do the project properly. We won't have to worry about the tanks for quite a while after that, and, uh, then we can, uh, we're gonna have to, you know, fund the HVAC in the building here, eventually here. That's gonna be a lot more than $100,000. So you're probably looking at, at, uh, I don't know, half a million to a million dollars if you have to make everything here, so. So I, I want to suggest that to you, that we move the money from the ARCA funds to take care of this project.
All right, comments, questions? Alderman Anastasia?
Well, that's a pleasant surprise, Mayor. Uh, that email I sent last Tuesday night, the title was very concerned that we were piecemealing this project, and I felt strongly that we should include the mixers along with the cleaning. And I'd like to commend the mayor. I mean, thank you very much for finding the funding. And I just hope the council will follow the mayor's advice and, and get everything done at once because, as Brad said last week, it's gonna make the water more pure. Taste is gonna be the same, but it's gonna be, it's gonna be mixed well, and it's, uh, it's supposed to be a more pure quality water, so. Uh, again, I hope the council will transfer the, I don't know. I thought last week the project was gonna cost $86,000, but the mayor just said now the total project's gonna be $70,000, so it's even better yet.
Alderman Robinson?
I'm gonna leave it alone. I like the idea of doing the entire project together instead of piecemealing it, um, but I'm a consensus guy. I was fine with moving the 30 grand over, but if this leaves our contingency alone and we can go and find other monies to use to do the entire project, I'm willing to postpone this one.
Any other comments, questions? Um, so at this time, I guess, do we want to circle back? Um, and can, can it wait two more weeks? Or do we want to amend this resolution?
Uh, let, let's, uh, let's do this. Let's, let's adjourn it for two weeks. We'll have, uh, I'm hearing, I was, Brad said around 7:00. I want to make sure it's not the 86.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we'll come back with the exact numbers to we move from the ARCA funds to take care of this project.
Okay.
John, it was, remembering service correctly, it was 80 plus, I think it was 86 or 87,000 plus. You have to account for the electrical, the electrical, which wasn't counted in any of the figures, plus, uh, an inch, was it 1,500 for every inch extra of soot, whatever they find in there?
Yeah, because we had, we had said not to exceed 30,000.
Yep.
So what it might just be best to do is to, um, allow us to just dive, and, and then we just bring back another resolution in two weeks with the proper figures and accounts. Does that sound all right? Mayor, that's right. Yeah, I, I have no problem with that. Um, I know we earmarked that funding probably a couple of, I don't know, a year, a couple of years ago. Um, and so I know the HVAC upgrades here in the city building, uh, are gonna be significant and more than what was originally scoped, so. Um, I think it's good news of, of money as Alderman Anastasia, you know, promoted. We, we love good, clean, crisp, cold water. And so, well done, Alderman Anastasia. And so, yeah, I don't have a problem with this.
Excuse me, I'm a little bit late, I'm sorry. But then if that doesn't work out, then we have to wait two more weeks and bring this back to the table.
Why wouldn't that work out?
It's $86,000, and you don't know what the electrical or the add-ons are gonna be, and you might still have to dip into the contingency. $86,000 was not a full amount.
Oh, Alderman Benyon, I'm sorry. But they're gonna get the numbers, and they're gonna take it from the capital fund that's been already set up, so we, what's the point of earmarking this if we're probably not gonna need to touch this? We're gonna be, I thought the consensus was that we would use the money from the capital fund, the HVAC. What is that?
What is that? The truth is, that was, you thought 90,000 in that account, though?
It's, it's 90 or 100. Les is on vacation, that's why he's not here today.
I mean, is this a time-sensitive thing?
Oh, my, one of the questions is, it's $86,000, and it didn't include quite a few different numbers, so you still may have to dip into contingency for another 20 or 30,000 dollars.
All right, yeah. But I would, I'd rather just know what the exact figures are that we want to set aside rather than just give a blink, 30,000 transferred, and then to transfer something back, kind of, right?
There should, the electrical shouldn't be more than a couple thousand.
And I thought we were gonna do that in-house anyways. I thought the electrical was gonna be done in-house.
Yeah, I think the mixers are only part of the total pumps. So then, back to my original question was, if that didn't work out, then if we decided not to because the extra stuff that's unknown, if we say we don't want to do that, then do we have to wait another two weeks to bring this one back?
No, um, what we could do is, uh, just postpone this one for two weeks.
I was having, you said that I had to die, that's why I was trying to go back to bill and say I had to just postpone it, and then you can postpone that should become amended in two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
So this will be on committees next week?
This will be on, uh, this won't be, this will, this will stay, this will stay in the regular meeting.
The ARCA discussion.
Yeah. So next Tuesday, we'll have, yeah, because it'll be the first. I wasn't sure if it was the fifth Tuesday of the month or not. So it'll be October 1st, so committees will bring forward whatever ARCA fund, funding we have. Brad will present the total cost of the project, um, and then we'll be able to identify whether or not we have the additional money, and, um, if this is necessary. So in two weeks, on the 8th. We can leave this on, we'll postpone it, and bring on the next resolution, the next proposal to transfer that money, uh, from the HVAC system. Any other suggestions or comments? I'm making a motion to postpone resolution 90-24. I'm making a motion to postpone resolution ninety dash twenty-four, uh, for two weeks to the next regular meeting, could I go a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Anastasia, all in favor? I oppose, motion carried. Resolution ninety-nine dash twenty-four.
Resolution ninety-nine dash twenty-four, PL number ninety-five dash twenty-four, to rename capital fund number two oh three to Franchot Park Beautification Project.
All right, we talked about this one last week in committees. Any comments or questions about this? All right, seeing none, I'll entertain sponsors. Alderman Forney? Alderman McCall? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Benyon?
Yes.
Alderman Panis?
Yes.
Alderman Forney?
Yes.
Alderman McCall?
Yes.
Alderman Robinson?
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia?
Yes.
And President Crawford?
Yes.
Resolution passes, unanimous.
Make a motion to adjourn for the good second.
Second.
Second by Alderman Robinson, all in favor? I oppose, motion carried.